Good morning and progress.
Well, good evening. Welcome to the February fifth Baltimore School Board meeting. Please stand and join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pleased to have everyone here tonight, and first of all, Kim, do you have your own call?
Yes, I do. I'm also. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Moving on, we resolved the Board of Education approved the agenda for the February 5th, 2024 Regent Board of Education meeting. Kristi?
Second.
Tom? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. And so we are pleased first tonight to have our spotlight, and we will be recognizing students in the Lego League. This is very appropriate tonight because the positivity character trait of the week is recognizing the success of others. So we are recognizing success. Richard DeBarbury.
As President Jennings mentioned, we're very excited tonight to recognize our first Lego League participants. So for those of you that are not aware, we had more than sixty Baltimore Central School District Elementary and Middle School students participate in the first Lego League Challenge, a robotics competition on Saturday, January 20th, 2024, at the McFoy Moses Campus in Portland. The student engineers designed, built, coded Lego robots to compete against students from several local elementary and middle schools. We actually have the most number of teams for the entire region, so congratulations to all of our students, and we're proud of them. First Lego League is an international inquiry-based program that teaches students ages nine through fourteen about science, technology, and collaboration. The Logo Challenge is in its third year and is organized by OCE and OSES. Two of our teams won awards at the competition. The first team that we're going to recognize is from Alden Elementary School, and they're coached by Kim Munson. Kim, can you come up? What's exciting about our Alden team is they won an award for the second year in a row, the Team Ronald the Breakthrough Award. This award celebrates a team that made significant progress in their confidence and capability in both the robot game and innovation project. And our shiny on some excellent four values. The team demonstrated they understand that what they discover is more important than what they learn. So we're excited to recognize our Alden Eagles. And if I could ask the following students to come up and get your certificate and will stay here for a picture. We have fifth grader Cardo Ganasus. Fifth grader Declan Lederer. Fourth grader Anderson Figurino. Fifth grader Josie Luddington. Fourth grader Matthew McCarthy. Fifth grader Maxwell Miller. Fifth grader James Smilow. Fourth grader Avery Shoneman. And fourth grader Tiffany Star.
Parents, feel free to come. Parents come forward if you want to take a picture.
Maya, look at us.
Need more pictures?
The next team that we're excited to recognize is the Vanier Elementary School team. For recognition here, I'm going to ask our two coaches to come forward. We have coaches Sarah Youngman and Carmen Melo Ezezzi. Our Vanier Elementary School students won the Rising All-Star Award. This award celebrates a team that judges and expects great things from in the future. So we're excited about what we're actually bringing. And I will put a shameless plug out that we're also excited to announce that next year, this competition will be hosted here in Baltimore. Okay, here's another second team. Fourth grader Charles Bush. Fifth grader Peter Bull. Fourth grader Matthew Ditch. Fifth grader Susan Biggad. Fifth grader Zach Farr. Fifth grader William Differ. Fifth grader Jamie Peach. Fifth grader Alava Melo Ezezzi. Fourth grader Zinnia O'Hara. And fifth grader James Mannerman.
Again, parents, please come forward. Picture as many as you wish.
Again, congratulations on our senior students. Want to thank the parents, also for the support our coaches for putting forward. However, I've recently been since the start of the school year participating and spending pretty much all day on Saturdays. We've really heard attendance. It was a long day, two and a half minutes per round, but it was an exciting day, and I certainly enjoyed being there and watching our students succeed. So again, congratulations to all of our students and staff. So moving on to our staff spotlight, we're excited this evening to have the Board of Education to recognize our staff members for outstanding achievements and accomplishments. I'm going to ask Katie Casoli to come up. She's our supervisor of school nurses. She can be the authority on the presentation here. And we're very lucky to have amazing team of the school nurses here at the Baltimore School District. Tonight, we will honor two of them for going above and beyond in their daily care and supporting students and staff at CWM Baker High School. Congratulations to Anthony Mestrafo and Heather Alwah. Our last person here. Both Tony and Heather were nominated by supervisor of school nurses Katie Casoli and others to receive this staff spotlight. I want to take a moment to read to you an excerpt from Mrs. Casoli's nomination letter. Quote, "It is difficult to think about one particular event deserving of kudos when daily Tony and Heather prove that they are solution-focused. They always have a potential solution for an identifiable obstacle. They are the first to volunteer when nursing aid arises, and they communicate with ease with students, parents, athletic trainers, and outside professionals, ensuring that our students are safe and supported while in care. In their role as high school nurses, Tony and Heather are often placed in emergency situations where they make safe, critical, split-second decisions with ease and expertise. They frequently triage students with seizures, beating to become dislodge, field trips, and sporting events where nurses are required to be present, and even complex and cautious scenarios keeping in mind New York State regulations." Mrs. Casoli said she received numerous emails from district parents complimenting Tony and Heather's work and acknowledging their quick response and understanding to help students related to sports and physical education. Our Director of Physical Education and Health and Athletics, Chris Amelita, and Baker High School's Assistant Principal, Margaret DeRue, also nominated Tony and Heather for this recognition. They stated that both Tony and Heather always go above and beyond to ensure that the physical education students and student athletes are able to carry out whether they're clearing them through family ID through the courses a year or following up with them on an injury they were dealing with. Mr. Cam Amelita said, quote, "There is never a time where they are not available to talk to and truly have a mobile door policy from his office and athletic trainer's perspective. They have a safety-first mindset." Thank you to all those who nominated Tony and Heather. We're very lucky to have these two at Baker High School and in our district. Thank you for going above and beyond and being a part of a wonderful nursing, educator, mentor, staff program. Congratulations.
Again, I want to congratulate all these students and staff. We are very proud of you, and I think everybody understands it. We'll get into the business section of the meeting now, so the excitement's over and you are free to go home and do your homework. Thank you, parents, for bringing these down, and thank you for your support. All applause. So next we have the first one, which is the one I've seen. So I'll go down with this. I have a January 22nd, we have a fourth session, which is like maybe the 31st, which is the day. Anybody want to comment on that?
And a lot of great conversation among the community. A lot of questions, a lot of ideas, good ideas for how we can present this and, and I think, you know, Sam was there too, what you want to gather and change up. You know, I think we all felt like we really appreciated having the community input and we're hoping that we get a lot more of that as we're growing this up.
I just want to thank everybody that comes up and is, so you really take into consideration everything that you said, whether it's positive or negative, very helpful, very persuasive, and think of things that we want to fulfill. It's always great conversation, and it was just really a question to hear some of the different comments.
Jump in on this one. Yeah, I completely agree. I think, I agree with you. I think there was a varied viewpoints in terms of what was being proposed, but I think, I think you did the job of this show with your team is that this is the first step, right? And so this idea of creating a dialogue where people feel like their voices are being heard is really important. And so I think if this was our first step, I think it was a good one because I think everybody that was in that room felt as though it would be perfect. I think that's really the way that we have to work. So, well done.
Okay, also then, last Saturday, February the third, we had an opportunity to go listen to and talk to some of our state legislators, and Rachel May is one of our representatives. John Mannion has part of the district, I know. They were there. I believe those were the two from our area. But it was an informative session. Anybody, I mean, there's a lot of talk about the budget. As some people may know, we were told last year that we would be guaranteed to receive at least the same amount of foundation aid this year, and guess what? We're not getting that much aid yet. We have hopes that that can change, but that was part of the discussion. Electric buses were a big part of the discussion, and a lot of that will be continued. So I don't know if there's, any other thoughts, comments?
I just have a quick thought. We spent a lot of time on the electric buses, and to me, we could have done that in probably ten minutes and spent some more time in the teeth of life. We are all really here, which is our students in the district itself and trying to recoup money that should have been given to us and so forth. So I think in the future that might be a message people want to send to them.
And I would encourage people then to make sure you're filling out that survey. I get it. That was one of the comments that I made.
Can I make a quick shout out to Maya? Because I know that there was a room full of superintendents and people in suits and board members, and Maya was, I think, probably the only student representative that was in this room of, not only Maya, I think, I talked to you about this afterwards. I think that's incredible for you to take your time out to spend a Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning sort of listening to the topic, but also I think what a great way to represent our district. So thank you very much for being there and representing the district as our, as our student representative. Just want to make sure that you understand.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and then I guess just before this, there was a policy meeting, and I know that Don took copious notes, so he's ready to report it now.
Well, I guess I can report on the policy committee. It was fruitful. We reviewed policies and we came up with some interesting ideas for certain things, which will eventually work our way up here to the board. Most of the retirement recommendations were accepted. Couple of exceptions there, some things you might want to take a look at, and a number of things for review, but that would be flashing out. But that'll all come in due time, and we'll have a chance to kind of, kind of go through them.
And just to dovetail a little bit, I think our discussion was probably one of the best discussions we've had at the Policy Committee meeting since I've been on the board. I mean, it's been a short seven months, but I think we did an outstanding job of reviewing policies upfront and then being able to bring that to the table and sharing whatever positive, negatives, keep it, don't keep it, share it with the board. So I think it was a great discussion.
The only thing is, so March 4th, that'll be the next meeting, that'll be the business meeting. They'll appear on the agenda of 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, and 4,000, based on those recommendations for first reading and pending no further discussion from the board. They'll appear in the April meeting for approval.
That's great. And I do appreciate it. It's long been a, a goal to review policies once a year, and the Policy Committee with Joe's guidance has gotten to where we will be reviewing these policies once a year. So that's, that's what it means. Thank you. Any upcoming events to comment on? Anything else? Anybody else wants to comment on here? Any say of attendance? Okay. Well, Maya, it's your turn then.
There's, it's been a very short report this week, so, Sea Club is currently going on after schedule Monday, but conditions have been good so far. My friend and I helped to organize a pizza fundraiser with Rotary Interact. Every Friday ninth, we will be handing out pizzas to those who order them online. Pizzas from different shops all around Baltimore are involved, and proceeds go to a local pantry. We are still in the process of trying to reach out to other schools to develop connections with other boardroom student members. Many are only just starting this fall, so it's new for them as well, but we are working on that. Spring sports signups will start this weekend, and we're also still in the process of finding helpers and different abilities to help update me. If you want to come, you can ask.
Okay, thank you so very much. Then we're ready for a sixth date, which is the public participation, and we do invite public comments. We ask in the interest of time to, for a speaker to limit their comments to three minutes, and we certainly, we don't engage in conversation, but we are very interested to hear the public's thoughts. We do ask that people be respectful and model behavior. We expect from our students professionally and courteously, courteously. So, Kim, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Catherine Woods in Rehears to Arts and the Community Theater.
My name is Catherine Woods, and I'm a parent of a current BTAP student, a parent of two BTAP graduates, and the managing director at Bolwensville Theater Guild. It is hard to sum up everything in three minutes, and I will not reiterate everything that has been said here by others or in an email that I sent to the Board of Directors regarding the free ticket policy for BTAP. More information has been made public that reinforces my belief that these, those making these decisions have never actually participated in theater. Patrons may now only reserve tickets to one performance. They may, however, reserve as many tickets as they like to that one performance. This is not a productive way to ensure equity. Theatergoers like to attend more than one performance as little nuances are slightly different at each performance. This is what is so great about live theater. You have now forced staff and students to monitor the ticketing platform to make sure all abide by that policy. This is an unproductive use of time. If they find a patron who is not in compliance, they must now contact that patron and remove them from all but one performance. This means the district is now getting charged for the ticket reservation, and again for the canceled reservation, and then again to re-reserve that ticket to somebody else. The administration keeps referring to the club account that can be used to purchase items. However, with no productive ways to raise funds, that account will be depleted in time, leaving future shows without that same ability. It is now high school musical season, and I try to attend as many productions as possible as I know many of the students and music staff through my work with Bolwensville Theater Guild. I've been watching for the school's ticket sales to start, and so far I have not found one district that is offering free tickets. Since the administration feels the need to allow others from all over central New York to attend BTAP shows for free in the name of equity, are they also willing, willing to pay our district residents, residents to attend other district shows so that we can see their shows for free? Finally, the district has now caused an issue for Bolwensville Theater Guild with this policy. We have heard rumblings in the community of people assuming that all theater is free in Bolwensville. This is going to hurt our eighty-two-year-old organization in a way that jeopardizes our existence. And if you're looking at equity in Bolwensville for theater doors and community partners like us, I'm happy to discuss the theater rental policy and how it is financially out of reach for BTG and other local not-for-profits in the area. As of now, we cannot use this beautiful venue that was promoted to the Bolwensville taxpayer as an asset to the community. We have been a partner with the district by providing student scholarships, donating to the Christmas campaign, and giving theater tech students a place other than the school setting to learn their craft. I want to plead with the Board of Education to talk with those who run the program rather than taking the advice of those who do not and never have run a theater program. Theater and its production of shows is a specialized skill that only those who have learned the craft can truly give it advice and a guidance on. A theater colleague was telling me about a program in Buffalo that tried the free ticketing program. Their program no longer exists. As a theater professional in this community and a parent, I am happy to discuss this further individually with any of you at any time. Thank you.
Steve Young, direct answers and free exchange of information are examples of good leadership.
That's also true. All right, I do want, um, so yes, direct answers to questions. So Maya, you asked a question last week, was the community informed? You were given a long-winded answer that ultimately ended up in a statement of saying we're closer to the first, but I'm going to answer that question for you. And that answer is no, the community was not informed, not in any meaningful way that represents or should be represented to come up to a, you know, logical answer to a decision of this magnitude. What other schools, right? So I asked that question last week. What other schools have did this? Because every, it should be fresh on everybody's mind, and we should all be able to say what other schools have done this. And it was brought up that we were modeling after Central Square, and they're actually charging eight dollars for their production of Beauty and the Beast, this production here. So I don't think we modeled after them. And then I also asked a question, which of you supported the socialist concept of making this, these places free? And I didn't get any answers on that. Actually, Don spoke about his time in China, so we can extrapolate that answer, you know, and, but that's, that's it. So I, we didn't really get any direct answers to any of the direct questions that were asked, which is unfortunate. There was also a comment that the perception of the shows were self-funded versus operational. And I would ask, who read with a letter that I wrote? Because that was stated in there very clearly. We understand that. Nobody, nobody said that, that the Bolwensville District shouldn't be investing in the arts. Nobody stated that whatsoever. That's never been stated. That's never been an issue. That, that, we simply said that you shouldn't have these tickets for free. That's, that's the only statement that we really made about this whole thing. The theater is just not free. The concept is just a poor concept. So with regard to spending down the ECA account, the students vote on that, and they're not going to spend down the account without a method of, you know, refunding that account. And they weren't given any time to put together any type of program to refund seventy thousand dollars worth of ticket sales. And actually, they just spoke about just, just now, just in this meeting in the beginning, when it was brought up about the funding, and I forgive me for not remembering exactly, but there was funding that was promised it would be the same next year as it was the previous year, and turns out it was not. That's literally what we're talking about. That's the crux of the conversation. Literally, you just said what we're afraid of. It actually happened, not in, not to affect us, but to affect something. So it exists. We literally just talked about it. Policing tickets. Catherine actually just brought that up. So too many tickets for families. If I, if I had a kid in the show and you told me that I couldn't come to one of the shows, we'd be having a discussion outside of this room. You tell me not going to refund my ticket, I can't come see my kid perform. We'd have, we'd be having a discussion outside of this room. And I found out that we have to ask permission for some of the outreach programs. Forty tickets going to an elderly community that have come just about every year. We have to ask permission to allow these people to get a ticket now? Not cool. Ateable expenses.
We appreciate your comments. I've been here several times, and your time is expiring.
I'll be back. Well, yeah, so ateable expenses, limited to external salaries. So Maya, the choreographer, so to speak like that, doesn't cover any of the internals, and it doesn't cover any of the cost of the ticket sales covered, which is, was a big deal about making this decision. But turns out the ticket sales, it's not ateable. So that, that part of the kickback, which was a big leg to stand on, doesn't exist. So I'll be back with the rest of it. Thank you. It's a live one. Thanks.
Nora DeBois, in regards to funding of extracurriculars.
Hi, folks. I, I am a parent of a current student and a parent of three graduates. My daughter participated in finding Nemo, and now she's been in Finding Nemo, and now she's been busy tonight at Color Guard. So, we are a pretty active family in the community. I spent my walk on this beautiful day, listening to the minutes or to the video from the last board meeting, so that I could make sure I was up to speed on what occurred in the last board meeting. A couple of things that I wanted to point out about that, and then just some remarks about my continuing concerns. There's been a lot of talk about the number of seats compared to historically what has been achieved. I think it was the years 21 and 22 that were offered up. The number of seats is not the critical issue here. What really is of concern is the percentage of tickets that were sold and then not used. And when I say sold, they weren't sold, but they were reserved. That's the important number. That was not offered, and I would encourage you to ask about it. It was, as a parent, I'm not privy to all of these numbers that staff are and U.S. board members are, so I would ask you to please investigate that further. My understanding, it was about 20% of the sold seats went unused. So, we had a structure where the school paid for some things that the musicals did, like salaries, space, et cetera, which I appreciate as a parent, I appreciate as a community member. But the rest was funded through the BTAP program. They had the benefits that went along with having control of that. They could do a less expensive show one year and do a more expensive show another year and make some of those longer-term budgeting decisions. They could rent those fabulous Nemo costumes that you saw if you saw the show Finding Nemo, or they could choose to make costumes or what have you. But those, when you move that funding further away from the source of the decision-making, as you know, it makes that decision-making more difficult and less responsive to the needs of the actual people who are working on that. We're not here asking you for more money, and we're not asking you to figure out ticketing procedures. We're asking you to leave that program to run as it did before. Let the decision-making remain in the hands of the student leaders and staff who are in the best position to do so. If you want more opportunity for the community to see our students in action free of charge, ask the kids for ideas. They are a generous bunch who would love that opportunity. So, I want to get back to the basics, though. What is the principle behind these decisions? If it is that all school activities should be free, then there are far-reaching consequences for all, not just BTAP, not just the marching band program, not just athletics, but other clubs as well. So, this is a really important question, and I hope that you will give it the consideration it needs. Nothing is free. You guys all know that, of course. You're in the midst of figuring out budgets, and that's hard business, and I appreciate your efforts at that. But please be guided by some sound principles, and don't mistake my support for the school budget as support for all parts of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, is that all the speakers? We have everyone?
One more.
One more, sorry.
Elizabeth Rowde-Sima, in regards to Be Smart, and please correct me if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Can I hand out pamphlets or no?
You can. I can take them for you and distribute them later. Thank you.
Okay, hello and good evening. My name is Liz Rowde-Sima, and I have stepkids at Baker, Durkey, and Ray, and a daughter that will be attending Van Buren. Tonight, I'd like to share some information about the Be Smart campaign, which is meant to promote responsible gun storage in our community. This program was developed to reduce the deaths, injuries, and trauma that result when children gain access to unsecured firearms, and teaches that safety starts at home. Throughout the U.S., an estimated 13 million households with children under the age of 18 contain at least one gun, and it's been found that the majority of children in gun-owning households know where the gun is stored, and approximately 4.6 million children live in a household with at least one gun that is stored, loaded, and unlocked. Most kids under the age of 18 who bring a gun to school obtain them from either their own home or a home of a relative or friend. According to the U.S. Secret Service, addressing student access to guns is a critical component of any school-based threat assessment intervention plan, and secure storage can be an important way to keep schools safer from gun violence. Households that lock firearms and ammunition are associated with 78% lower risk of self-inflicted firearm injuries and 85% lower risk of unintentional firearm injuries among children and teenagers compared to when those are unlocked. So, the Be Smart campaign emphasizes that secure storage is always the adult's responsibility and encourages five steps to keep kids and families safer. So, to be smart, S, secure guns in homes and also vehicles. M, model responsible behavior around guns. A, ask about the presence of guns in other homes, like at your kid's playdates or at your family members' homes. R, recognize the role of guns in suicide. And T, tell your parents to be smart. Most importantly, this campaign is neutral on the topic of gun ownership, as it doesn't encourage or discourage individuals from owning guns, nor advocates for changes to gun laws. Rather, it emphasizes the power of all adults to take agency over the safety of children and teens. So, my S today is that the Beeville School District consider collaborating with our local Be Smart volunteers and consider distributing some of our resources to your district SROs and parents. Thank you.
Okay, well, we again appreciate public remarks, and we like to hear from people. So, that's the last one, Kim? Okay. So, we'll move on into the regular business meeting. We have our consent agenda first. Resolve Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. So, Andrew, Tom. Okay, motions on the floor, questions for discussion on the consent agenda. One thing I did note is that we do have several budget transfers again, and we have so many line items, and as teachers move and salary moves from one place to the other, we'll continue to see some of that. So, the other thing within the budget transfer that is good news is we now have an additional SRO in our main campus, which we've talked about, and we're very proud that security and safety is one of our top priorities, and we've been able to fund that and get that going. So, that did result in budget transfer, but a good budget transfer. Other questions, thoughts on consent agenda? I think we're ready to vote then. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you. And now, 8A, one of Don's favorite topics. Resolve Board of Education approve Baldingsville Central School District policy series 7,000 pursuant to the attached. You got a motion? Sam?
Sir.
Don? Any questions or discussions here? These have been thoroughly vetted, so I doubt that anything else has come up. Okay, we're ready to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Yes. Okay, now, the new business is 8B, that the Board of Education approve the naming of the main gymnasium at Charles W. Baker High School after Leo Johnson, educator, coach, and athletic director pursuant to the attached. Motion?
Sir.
Don, Andrew? And would you read that, please, Joe?
So, I'm going to first, let me start with the biography, and I do want to recognize one of Leo's sons is in the audience, with his wife, Kevin. And then we also have Tony Saracini there, who's been a big advocate in putting forth the petition that has brought this to the board. So, I'd like to first start by reading the biography of Leo Johnson, and then I'll go through with the resolution for you to act on. So, Leo Johnson dedicated three years of his life to coaching and mentoring athletes in the Baldingsville Central School District. He served as a wrestling coach and as an athletic director, where he impacted countless lives and shaped the future of Baldingsville's sports programs. Mr. Johnson's name has been synonymous with wrestling since 1960, when his coaching career began at East Syracuse, Monroe. He has been called Mr. Wrestling. In 1964, he began coaching in Baldingsville. Under Johnson, the Bees won 14 Amadaga League Wrestling Championships, eight Section III Class A Championships, and eight Section III Tournament Wrestling Titles. From 1978 to 1981, Johnson's teams were the top-ranked dual-meat team in the state. During his combined 25 years of wrestling, Johnson's teams at ESM and Baldingsville compiled a phenomenal 255 to 36 to 5 record and 87.6% winning average. His Baldingsville wrestling teams have become the most awesome force on the high school mats by earning the New York State Dual Meat Championships in 1978, '79, and '81. The squad had two losses against 130 victories. Johnson won numerous Coach of the Year honors, including Northeast Regional Coach of the Year in 1974. In 1980, he was selected National Wrestling Coach of the Year by the National High School Athletic Coaches Association. A graduate of SUNY Portland, he is a member of its Athletic Hall of Fame. Other honors include induction into the State High School Wrestling Hall of Fame, the National High School Hall of Fame. In 1998, Johnson was inducted into the National Amateur Wrestling Hall of Fame in Oklahoma. As an athletic director, Leo played an instrumental role in fostering a culture of sportsmanship and teamwork within our community. He has tirelessly worked towards providing opportunities for young athletes to develop their skills while instilling values such as discipline, dedication, and respect. Through his leadership, he has helped shape well-rounded individuals who excel not just athletically, but also academically. He retired as athletic director in 1994, and I also know, as previously said in these meetings, that he also had an impact on creating many of the girls' athletic programs in this district. So, we can't thank Leo enough for all of his contributions to Baldingsville schools. And with that, based on the recommended action, I'll read the resolution. Whereas Mr. Leo Johnson is known, was known as a friend, a mentor, a teacher, a coach, an athletic director, and a father figure among his many roles in the Baldingsville Central School District, where he had worked for three decades. Whereas the Baldingsville Central School District Board of Education, following a request from the community members, former students, athletes, and staff, desires to honor Mr. Johnson for years to come by naming the proposed renovated main gymnasium at Charles W. Baker High School in his honor. Whereas pursuant to Board Policy 2360, the Board of Education recognizes and understands the fact that from time to time, individuals should be identified for special honor or recognition. This recognition is an ongoing affirmation of the honoree's connection and dedication to the district's educational community. Whereas in the event the proposed renovated main gymnasium fails to develop, which we know will not be the case, the superintendent or designated will take other steps to honor Mr. Leo Johnson in a similar manner pursuant to Board of Education Policy 2360. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education and the Baldingsville Central School District as follows. You have your first and second motion.
Actually, I was going to say.
Jeremy second, though?
Yeah, could we omit that and add another second from Jeremy Kelly, please?
Thank you.
Can I mention to you, with motions on the floor, so discussion? He, Leo Johnson, I was raised on stories of Leo Johnson, and my father coached with him. He is as special as this gym being named after him from my race. It's not often in a district you have a man who understands how to coach kids the way that Leo did. And not just him as a coach, but I have as an athletic director, but even as a wrestler, while he was the athletic director, his impact is hard to quantify. And the way that he understood how to work with kids created the honors and the winning and the legacy that we talk about. And, you know, to have a national Coach of the Year in 1980 as a part of our district is something special, and this is without question the least this district can do. He was, he's an incredible guy, and his impact is so far-reaching, not just in my life, but any wrestler. And frankly, as an AD, I'm sure most of the athletes were impacted by his life. So, just appreciate this. Glad, I kind of missed the early discussions on this because I wasn't on the board yet, but glad to be a part of it now.
Any other discussion? I also want to note that, well, we had over 1,200 signatures and a lot of community support, and also a commitment from the supporters to pay financial cost for a signage of that, which is unusual, but certainly welcome, right? So, okay.
The only other comment I would make, Chris Campblieta is working. We know Leo and his wife couldn't be here. They're actually out of town. But we are looking for a more formal reception that we will hold at some point during the athletic banquet at the end of the school year. So, we'll have an opportunity to hopefully highlight and showcase some of the graphics that will be in the gymnasium when the gymnasium is complete, and it will give us an opportunity to thank him in person for all of the service to the Baldingsville Central School District.
Thank you. No further discussion. I think we're ready to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And please congratulate your father, and thank you, Mark. Well, that discussion, I'm sure, will be continued, but it is an incredible record, and those are the kind of staff members that we are so proud of. Okay, moving on to 8C. Resolve Board of Education approve the estimated Health and Welfare Services Agreement and pass to the following school districts. Kino Meridian, Central Square, Fulton City, James River Web, Jordan Elbridge, Liverpool, Marcellus, North Syracuse, Oswego City, Phoenix, Red Creek, Salve, Syracuse City, West Union C, and West Hill, pursuant to the attached. Motion, please? Wayne? Christie? A brief explanation, this is cost for other kids that are attending, so that we, this is an equalization thing, right?
It's for the private schools that are within our district boundaries that we then charge those districts back when their students that come here.
Right.
St. Mary's in Porterville.
Okay, yeah. So, this is an ongoing payment due every year, but just to be sure, we have the right charges on those. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 8D. Resolve Board of Education approve the revised award of kitchen equipment bid number 396 pursuant to the attached. Motion, please?
Sir.
Don, Sam. And I think, brief explanation, we accepted the bid and then found out that the low bidder wasn't able to supply. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is more perfunctory than anything else. All, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And then, 8E. Resolve Board of Education approve the award of kitchen equipment bid number 397 pursuant to the attached. So, this is one that we got, the next one, and you do know, we've researched this and feel that this one will be in compliance.
Actually, this is a whole other bid.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the 396 was revising the line.
Okay.
And this is additional equipment. So, what we're actually doing is sticking with our spending plan for utilizing our fund balance to make up for it. And I think I just did that out of order, I probably.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so I think I'm, did I get a motion on that or not?
Sir.
Andrew?
Sir.
Wayne? Okay. Any questions, discussion? Those in favor? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. That is, I think all the motions we have on the table. Next would be our board's roundtable. And the only item we have on this right now is the committee assignments. So as we've had new people come on the board, the question is, you can select committee assignments, but we don't have a ton of openings on committee assignments, right, Joe?
Right. So not knowing where the board stands with this, we wanted to put it out there just for discussion. We know that we had two members are no longer here on the policy committee, so there is two seats available for that. We can have up to four, at a minimum you have to have two in order to have productive dialogue and discussion. I believe the other committees are, are filled. We had, when Christie was appointed, we added to the audit committee at the time. But certainly if the board feels that there's a need to, you know, add more or reshuffle now that we have, you know, different players, it's really a discussion for you all to have and we'll do whatever you would like.
Yeah. So, Andrew?
So, Luke, how many committees you, we'd love to have in the policy committee, such you'd rather than one.
There's an opening, I'd be happy to fill. So, so then the other question, I guess, would be just to, for, for Tom and Jeremy, are there committees that have vacancies that they could look at, right?
It really is just the policy. There's, there'd be one additional seat with that. And then if any board members would like to be a part of any district committee, so we have the Code of Conduct Committee, it's not a board-level committee, Mental Wellness Committee, Diversity Equity Inclusion, Safety Committee, you know, those are options too. They meet more regularly than district committees, or, excuse me, than working.
Technology.
Technology is another district committee.
So I've participated in the Safety Committee also, which is a, what, every other month, I think, is when they meet. And that's a Zoom meeting, so it's pretty easy to attend. But maybe, maybe in Friday's letter, what we should do is...
Listen, I can, I can put the listing back in there.
Because we have required committees and then we have district committees, which you can participate in, but are not required. When we're on committees, though, we are, you can't have more than four board members because then you'd have, if you have five, you'd have a forum and it'll turn into a board committee.
So actually, a point of clarification, we can have more than four at the meeting, but only four can participate.
Correct. That's true. They're open meetings. Good point.
So what I'll do is I'll place those in the Friday letter, just so that the full board knows who is currently seated on district level committees and then also board level committees. And in that way, if anybody wants to have further discussion or make a change or show up, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. That agreeable to everyone? Does that sound reasonable? Okay. And we're ready to move on to our ten A. Resolve Board of Education enter into executive session for collective negotiations related to the Taylor Law to discuss the CSEA and BTA contracts as well as non-aligned, aligned support staff terms and conditions of employment. Thank you, Wayne. Tom? I hope there's no discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, we'll adjourn and be in executive five minutes. Thank you.
[inaudible]